Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. In this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding remotely. Also present are Counselor, Council President Kate McAllister and Councilors Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groot, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as our Sergeant of Arms at this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Captain Rick Bailey serving in that role. We are honored to have some of our local Girl Scouts here this evening. I'll have some additional remarks following the Pledge of Allegiance, but at this time, if everyone will please stand, I'd like to ask the Girl Scouts if they will please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready, girls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which one nation, under God, in its full with liberty and justice for all.
Beautifully done.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President McAllister. Thank you, Sandpoint. I'm down from Spokane. My name is Brian Newberry. I'm the CEO of this Council of Distinction here with our Sandpoint Girls. It's a good fall for us. We hit 4,000 girls two weeks ago. We haven't been that many Girl Scouts since 2013. So I think we'd all acknowledge in the room, if you have more Girl Scouts in the world, it's a better place. And I just appreciate coming. Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's yours.
Here, I've got, here, come on. Oh, you can see her on TV up there. I've got one of our youngest Girl Scouts right here. So there, there we go. And that's for a brighter future. Mayor, as you know, the Day of the Girl is next Wednesday. It's a day acknowledged 12 years ago when, when the United Nations say, "We want to honor our girls out there across the world." There's billions and billions of girls, and we want to make sure their voice is heard. So Girl Scouts, this night, that round of applause, that was for you, that we know that you make a difference in this world. And you know what, girls? You make the world a better place. So thank you, Sandpoint Council, for supporting us. We'll leave you with our parting gifts of cookies, as always. And as always, this is the most beautiful drive of any place in my council to go to. God bless you, Sandpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for those remarks. We appreciate it. And I'd like to also thank the Girl Scouts for attending this evening and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Very well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any announcements from council this evening? Hearing none. Are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of announcements tonight and presentations with those from our Police Department. First, I would like to have Sergeant Skyler Ziegler come up. And he is going to be making a presentation of the Police Department's Life Saving Award. And it's been some time since we have done this before, and it's not too often. But we want to share this with the council and the public tonight.
Good evening. The City of Sandpoint would like to extend their appreciation and heartfelt thank you for service and dedication to the Police Department and to your community and present you this award for appreciation for your actions on August 31st, 2023, to which an individual's life saving was saved because you choose to make a difference. I, Sergeant Skyler Ziegler, recommended Officer Hopman for recognition for going above and beyond on August 31st, 2023. EMS personnel stated Officer Hopman likely saved the driver's life because he was having a massive cardiac event at that time. On August 31st, 2023, at about 8:00 PM, Sandpoint Police Department was dispatched to a reckless driver call. Dispatch described the vehicle as a red Ford sedan with out-of-state plates that had been swerving and was in the wrong lane of travel. Officer Hopman was able to locate the vehicle in the parking lot safely and found the driver slumped over the steering wheel. Officer Hopman was able to wake the driver up and immediately noticed that the driver was not impaired, but was likely having a medical issue. He immediately knew something was wrong, contacted EMS. EMS responded and determined that the driver was having a massive cardiac event. On behalf of the City of Sandpoint and our community, I would like to thank you for your service and dedication and diligence for responding to all calls for service. I would like to call up Officer David Hoffman.
I'd like to present Officer David Hoffman with his very well-deserved Certificate of Life Saving Achievement Award. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, we have a second presentation tonight from the Police Department, and I would like to ask Lieutenant Chamberlain to come up and give the council and the public an update on our Critical Response Protocol and some updated tools that have been dispatched throughout the Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Before I go into the medical bag itself, I kind of want to give you a little bit of background on how it came about realizing that this could be a very critical piece of equipment that hopefully we never need. So here, a couple of weeks ago, Selkirk Fire, Bonner County EMS, and Sandpoint Police Department all got together actually here in this room and did a tabletop exercise simulating a mass casualty incident. As law enforcement, our roles, our role used to be, we stopped the shooting. We stopped the killing. That was our role. After that, yeah, security, some other things. And then we really realized, especially through this training, that, okay, we don't just stop the killing. We very likely will be the first people to stop the dying. Right? If we have a mass casualty incident, we have people that have traumatic injuries, that we realistically will be the first ones and maybe the only ones for some amount of time before it's safe for EMS, before it's safe for fire to come in and actually assess that scene, start dealing with patients, triaging patients. We very likely could be the ones to do that. Before we got these bags, we had personal medical kits. Good for one person. And in a mass casualty, one person, I guess, is better than none, but it's not going to do a whole lot. So we really realized, okay, in our list of needs, what are our highest priorities? Well, saving lives. That's, that's our number one priority. So we decided we're going to team with EMS and figure out what can we, as police officers, first-line responders, what can we realistically do to save lives without incredible amounts of training? Now, obviously, we're not going to be performing surgeries or anything like that. So we decided that we're going to get this bag. So this backpack, we actually got five of them. We have four shift supervisors, dedicated shift supervisors. So almost 24-hour coverage with a shift supervisor. All of them will have one medical bag. So pretty much at all times, one large medical bag should be available. There's another one that's for administration. The leader be with myself, the captain, the chief. So that during the daytime, which most mass casualty events do happen during the daytime, we'll have two on, two available. So what these are briefly, I know your time's very valuable. These bags are outfitted with things primarily to stop bleeding. Right? Very simple. We actually have combat gauze designed specifically to stop bleeding. We have tactical gauze, compression gauze, tape, scissors. We actually have a whole front pouch full of tourniquets, things that immediately can stop that bleeding, right? We don't necessarily have to perform incredible medical feats, but we should be able to get people to the people that can. That's really the goal of this bag. So we actually spend a decent amount of money making sure that we have good equipment, not just that we have equipment, we want quality equipment. We want to be able to know how to use that equipment. We've actually teamed up with EMS to come in and train us so that we can properly use the equipment. But this is our medical bag. Again, hopefully, it's something that we never have to use. But if we do, we want to be able to save lives, not just stop the killing, but stop the guy. That's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Next on the agenda this evening is the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a comment signup form and hand it to staff. The comment form is available by the front door on the table. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have the opportunity to do so, we'll provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I'll now recite the rules and procedures for public comment during the meeting. Council may not hear or take testimony during public forum on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during a properly noticed public hearing. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Those in attendance shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, use threatening or abusive language, hold up or display any type of sign, speak out of turn, or clap, or engage in any other similar act which disturbs the meeting. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed to any individual, organization, or business. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or to council or to staff, and please do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up at the front tables in the front of the room as this disrupts the meeting and makes it difficult for them to do their work. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if it's needed. Unless otherwise provided, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it's your turn to speak, please introduce yourself and state whether you reside within city limits. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum portion of the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Helen Newton.
Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I've been a resident of Bonner County for 76 years. I was city clerk from 1981 for 24 years, followed by four years on the City Council. Other than members of the Travers family who may be here, I'm probably the only one that was here when Travers Park was developed. I was city clerk when Sally Coopan, the mayor, had the vision of turning that city dump into a playground.
Ms. Newton, Ms. Newton, are you to speak on the Travers Park item? That is an item that has already been decided by council. We've already heard a lot of public comments on that. We will not be hearing any more public comments on that item this evening. Please have a seat. We will not have any disruptive behavior in the meeting this evening or you'll be escorted out of the room.
I'm very sorry for your decision.
Madam, Madam Clerk, has anyone else signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And Giant Valley.
And Giant Valley, and I live in the city, and I thank you all for serving. And I just want you to be able to make sure that you involve citizens. And I sometimes feel like we are not a voice to be heard, and we need to be part of that. And my thoughts were about Travers Park, but bring us to the table. We need to have our voices heard.
Thank you, Ms. Giant Valley. Madam Clerk?
Sharon Lewis. Hello, my name is Sharon Lewis. I am a resident of Sandpoint, 608 Oak Street. And I guess, I guess just because of all the voices I've been listening to in the last hour right out in front of City Hall. It, I, I used to be a member of the Sandpoint Tree Committee. And it was about a year ago that I got up here and we were celebrating the implementation of the Urban Forestry Plan, which a lot of money was spent on and a lot of time. And that was a year ago. I've been traveling in and out of Sandpoint right now for work. And so I haven't been paying really close attention, but it does make me wonder, after listening to all the voices outside today, what is the status of our tree committee right now in the Urban Forestry Plan? Because that is a vehicle to be used for public oversight in projects such as what is happening in Travers Park. So I guess that's all I have to say right now, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Molly McCann.
The only comments I have are on Travers Park, and I'm extremely upset that you're not allowing comments on something that's not on the agenda that you allowed us to talk about. And you never allowed public hearings or public comments on Travers Park before that decision was made. We deserve a voice in that decision. That's our land. That's our public park, and you've never allowed us that opportunity.
Please have a seat. We certainly did have public comments on that.
Julie McCollum.
Hi, I'm Julie McCollum, and I'm a resident of this, of Sandpoint. And I can't speak any, I'm always going to speak about Travers because we use it a lot as ours, the Waldorf School where I work. I can't speak about that, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCollum.
Greg Flint.
My name is Greg Flint. I've lived in this county over 30 years. I would have comment on the city's process. I'm going to give a quote from Abraham Lincoln. He said, "What I wish is to do what the people would have me do. The problem is to find out what that is exactly." It does not have to be a problem for us. Just ask. If you've got a good idea about developing this or that or whatever, get public input at the beginning. Don't bring it to them as a done deal and rubber stamp it through. Let the public hear about it, involve people all the way through. That's what democracy looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Flint.
Sally Moon.
Almost 71 years here. Our family came in 1904. So we have longevity and we have history here. And history is in the making. And I would just appreciate if we had a voice in that. So I think that it's probably a hard issue for you guys because, you know, you think that you've been doing your due diligence, but I think we really need to reconsider. So there are some health issues in that park, and there's a reason why it's always been an open-air park. There's a landfill below it, and there's toxicity that could actually harm people in a building. So that's why there are no enclosed buildings at that park. So I really would ask for the EPA to come in and check that area because I don't think it's a sound move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moon.
Devon Chapman. Nancy Hastings.
With the passage last week of the Russell Court Building, I stand before you today imploring you as a resident of 27 years who paid for the public land.
Nancy, again, we're not going to have, we're not going to hear.
I'm talking about the operating budget now. I know that this building is coming. They waived their check and threw it at you, and it's coming. And it'll be great. But it'll only be serving the, I'm talking about the building. It's only going to be serving 16 people at a time.
Nancy Hastings, you've already heard public comments on this topic. Please take a seat.
I am talking about the operating budget because today I talked with several of your council members, and I found out that we do not have an operating budget. You people are business people. I would not build a $7.5 million building without a clear operating budget, a management budget. I want to know, and I want to get a commitment from those who I will vote for in a month, whether or not you're going to give public free time, 20%, 25%. You're taking 20% to 25% of the public land that was paid for by all these citizens. And you're basically essentially building a private tennis and pickleball courts. So unless you are willing to commit in writing in a management plan that is published within the next three weeks before, before election time, I and many people will assume that you're just willing to do that because somebody waived this check and they're just... I, I mean, for me, I want it to be open and public park. And it's not an open and public park if it's a fee-based. And if you're going to just want to make this more like Aspen, then I wish you would have went to Aspen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings.
Beth Peterson.
Thank you for letting me speak. I've lived here for almost 48 years. And I love this place and the people in it. And I just request that the general public is listened to. And I don't feel that we are. And this is a bad decision without considering another location.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Margaret Arntz.
Thank you for the time to speak, and thank you all for serving our city. I'm 65, and I've lived here since I was 17. I just want to let you know that I know many, many, many people and families that do not feel represented by your decisions. And I am in agreement with everyone who has spoken already that you may think that you have heard everybody's opinions and voice about your decisions, but it is not true. We need more public comment before decisions are made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Arntz.
Gail Lister. Mary Catherine Roll.
Yes, to councilmen, I'm Mary Catherine Roll. I live in the City of Sandpoint. And I almost thought I was coming to a, the county commissioners' meeting, not a city meeting. And I'm sorry that you're silencing us, and I'm totally against this plan that you have to destroy something that we paid for with our tax money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roll.
Jeremy Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for your time and dedication to staff members who work so hard for the city. My name's Jeremy Grimm, candidate for mayor. And I want to tie this, this comment into what's happening tonight and encourage people to have hope and faith in the, the public process. Tonight, you have a contract before you to renew with Lake City Law. And I want to bring up some concerns in terms of competency and who that, that, that contract really serves. I'm going to relate this to an issue I've brought to your attention now twice in the last four years. And that has to do with Idaho Code 678205, which is the code section regulating development impact fees. Development impact fees are charged to new construction, residential and non-residential in the City of Sandpoint. And as many of you may recall, I've brought to your attention with concerns that the city is operating without a Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Idaho Code 678205D states that the advisory committee shall file periodic reports at least annually with respect to the capital improvement plan, report to the governmental entity and any perceived inequities in imposing the development impact fees, and advise the governmental entity of the need to update or revise land use assumptions, the capital improvement plan, and development impact fees. Two weeks ago, I made a public records request to Melissa Ward asking for all Development Impact Fee Committee meetings, actions, and reports that have been transferred to the City Council. I got back one meeting in four years. You're not operating in accordance to Idaho Code, and your legal team and city administrator are the ones advising you, okay? This is a huge liability, in my opinion. And I think, if I recall correctly, I'm sure it's in the minutes, the last time I brought this up, the city administrator stated, "There's no problem. You've checked with legal." So if I'm incorrect in any of this, I sincerely offer my apology to Ms. Stapleton and Lake City Law. But I think if you check the records and you check Idaho Code, you will find that there's something amass. And I would ask you to really consider this issue. I've brought to you the third time now before you renew any contract with Lake City Law. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm.
Janine Shepherd.
Hi, Janine Shepherd, Bonner County. Just wanted to open you guys in prayer. I'm going to pray for God's peace over your meeting tonight, if you want to join me in praying. Dear Lord, excuse me, we come to you tonight submitting our will and our time to you. We thank you for the work that you will accomplish tonight. Help the mayor and counselors to be sensitive to your leading, making decisions prayerfully and with wisdom that comes from you. Help their hearts to be softened to your love for them and for everyone here. We know you have a plan for our city, for good and not evil. We pray for a hedge of protection around our city, that the residents here... We pray for a hedge of protection around our city, that the residents here will seek you with all their hearts. We want revival to come here, Lord. Please set our hearts ablaze for you and you alone. We lift each agenda item to you, asking that you make it clear what may be unclear. You are not a god of confusion, but of order. Bring insight and wisdom in each item, making each one's heart here ready for the work that needs to be done. Help us to love one another well. We see your hand all around us, not only in the beauty of where we live, but in the faces of the people here. We see you in the kindness of others and the way you care for us. You are mighty, Lord, and good. We thank you for the ways you bless us daily. I lift each heart here to you and ask that you draw them to you. You are a good father and we love you. In Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Teresa Kamink.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I just have a quick message that a lot of the people in the community want to continue to keep our green spaces green. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kamink.
Gwen Pogue.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and I appreciate the service of all of you. And I have a longevity standing in this community also. I've been in healthcare practice for 50 years. And I have seen a lot of things that help people to enjoy our environment. And it was drawn to my attention today and I was not aware of an original grant that was presented and there was a certain protocol that went with it. And I'm not sure that it's been honored. And I just think that sometimes in life we have to be a little flexible. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pogue.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That has exhausted the 20 minutes of public forum at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. For those who didn't get a chance to speak, but would still like to speak, we will open up the public forum again at the end of the regular agenda. Alrighty, that concludes the public forum portion for the first part of the meeting. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $431,674.65 for regular payables. Does council have any questions or are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove the proposed resolution for the renewal of legal services to give legal an opportunity to reference the law that Mr. Grimm brought up and clarify us on why we are or are not in compliance.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Is there, oh, we don't need a second. Okay, so we will remove that item. And I will entertain a motion to approve the amended consent calendar.
No moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Groot.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved and now we will address item 6C, the proposed resolution for renewal of legal services agreement with Lake City Law Group. I can't see who do we have in the room there on the legal side.
Fonda Jovic from Lake City Law.
Fonda, thank you. Could you address Mr. Grimm's comment, please?
I have not evaluated this on behalf of the city. So this is an issue that would have been presented to my, one of my partners. It's not been directly asked of me. So if you would like for me to give a formal opinion on the allegation, I'm happy to do so. I'm just not prepared to do that tonight.
Okay. Counselor Rule, is there another question or comment that you want to make with regards to item 6C? Would you like to table that or would you like to propose a motion?
I guess I would choose to table the item so that we can have clarification for the public, whether or not the city is or is not in compliance. Since I do not have further information on this, and so it makes me slightly uncomfortable to approve this on the consent calendar.
Okay.
So I make a motion to table.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
So it'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker.
No.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Groot.
No.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
All right.
This is Mr. Mayor.
Item is tabled. Until the next council meeting, can we get can we get some information by then and have a proper response to the question for Mr. Grimm?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So that'll be tabled until, let's see, what's the next meeting? Would that be the 18th, I believe, of October?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank staff and council for allowing me to have that clarification. And I think it will serve the public. So we no longer have further questions about this issue.
Thank you. That's appreciated. With no old business on the agenda this evening, we'll move on to new business in Idaho County's Risk Management Program or ICrimp Joint Power Subscriber Agreement. At this time, I'll yield the Florida City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton, who will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to hand it over to our Human Resource Risk Manager, Isis Ellison, to introduce Debbie with ICrimp. But to give you all some background, as a reminder, we are insured through the Idaho City County Risk Management Pool through ICrimp. And we typically just have our renewals on the council agenda as a consent item each year. But ICrimp had made some changes this year in coverages that aren't specific to us. They were coverage changes for members across the state. So we thought it most prudent and appropriate to have a short presentation for council on that tonight and give you an opportunity to ask any questions you might have. And with that, I will turn it over to Isis.
Thank you. So this evening, I would like to introduce Debbie Ferguson, our ICrimp representative, to go over the changes and do a brief presentation.
Thank you for having me tonight. My first time using Zoom, so please bear with me. So let's go over your policy, your. I apologize. At home, there it is. I'm Debbie Ferguson, your North Idaho representative. I am located in Athol, Idaho, which is fairly close to the county line. And I've been a licensed agent for 13 years. We, what is ICrimp? We're a public entity that was formed in 1985 as an alternative to the regular commercial market, which seems to have ups and downs in rates. So we've had a more stable rate for you guys and we're licensed and a regulated insurer in the state of Idaho. We only insure public entities in the state of Idaho and we are a public entity as well. As a member of ICrimp, you're not buying insurance. You have ownership in what happens within ICrimp. And then you've got joint power benefits, which is that joint power agreement that you guys have. I don't think I provided that, but I'm hoping you gave that to them to review that just describes our relationship between you as a city and ICrimp and how we both have powers that come together and work as a team. We do local governments. Our home office is in Boise, Idaho. And we have, you have direct access to our Board of Trustees, our management, our underwriting, our claims, our risk management team and me, your representative. You do all have a book on your desk that says, Member Reference Manual. It lists all of these different departments within it. So if you have questions, you can contact them directly. When it comes to your policy, you have many different types of coverage. What ICrimp has is what they'll call a multi-line policy, which is unique in the industry. Most of the time you're buying different types of policies. You buy a sexual minimalization. You buy a general liability and auto and employment practices. And we bundle that all together for you to keep it in one policy to make it easy for you to access, which also gives you one deductible. You also have errors and emissions, employee benefits, chemical spraying, city property and other coverages. Any questions on the coverages that you guys have as a city?
Council, any questions?
And then we have law enforcement. Missed that one. So for your renewal, your property deductible is now $5,000. Your crime deductible is $5,000. Your cyber deductible is $1,000 because you participate in our know before program throughout the city. And then you've got an employment deductible of $20,000 that can be waived by contacting the risk manager before you guys take adverse action or terminate an employee. Your current premium is $222,922. Of that, we've seen your current payroll is It's up 2% from last year, but you have increased because you've taken on the new fire departments in Segal and West Side by 30%. And your property values are currently at $69,981,666, which is an increase in the last five years of 9%. How we determine your ratings is the rating information below. We've got 45% loss ratio for the city. You've got a law, you've got a law enforcement deductible because your law enforcement participates in our risk management program. Where our law enforcement risk manager comes up and does specific training for your law enforcement. And we are catching up on the payroll growth. Because we are a public entity, we do understand that you can't sustain substantial increases in your premium. And so that's why we slowly bump your premium up when you've had a 30% increase in payroll. If you look below, you've got the underwriting history that shows your net contributions for the last six years. You see the star asterix on 21, 22 and 23 as undeveloped years. What that means is that there still could be claims from those years that just haven't come through or we have open claims that have not been paid out. So currently, the city has invested in the last six years $119,353 to the program. And because we're a pool, we all pool our resources. In my experience as an insurance agent, there will be a time when the city needs help from the pool. At this time, you guys have a plus, but there'll be a time when something happens in the future where you're going to need other members of the pool to help you pay a claim within the city. This just shows the underwriting exposure, the payroll and the net contributions that you guys have made to the program. As you can see in 19 and 22, that you dipped into the pool. You, you, you got more than you paid to the pool. Any questions on this slide? Now, I gave you all the, I'm going to stop the share. The summary of policy changes that clarifies all the changes that have been made to the policy. This started October 1st. Did you have any questions on any of the changes within, within this document? Do you have any questions for me?
We appreciate you looking out for us.
We are. I, I came from the private sector and I, today is actually my two-year anniversary with ICrimp. And I'm just amazed on how well ICrimp does with paying out claims and providing risk management to the members because you don't see that in the private sector. I, I, I've just been amazed at how they look out for all of the members. And ICrimp itself is a member of the pool.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Through that presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk from the public who'd like to comment on this matter? No?
One moment, there's a hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you.
Heather Flint Chateau.
My hand is raised for the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Flynn. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Idaho County's Risk Management Program Joint Power Subscriber Agreement. Is there a motion?
No moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Groot.
Yes.
Motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing and possible council action on the updated City of Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan. A notice of public hearing was published in Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on September 12, 2023. I'll now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Tweet.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to deliver the final draft of the comprehensive plan as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It has been a long process and the process did start in 2019. There was the pause, but I do believe that the engagement both before the pause and after the pause have resulted in consistent direction from the community in terms of vision, values and priorities. And so while it, it seems to have dragged out, I believe the product before you we know is truly comprehensive. It covers all the required elements. And at this time, I think I will turn the presentation over to Miriam McGilray with Logan Simpson, who has worked with the city since the beginning of the process to bring the plan forward.
Thank you, Amy. As she mentioned, my name is Miriam McGilray. I work with Logan Simpson. And I have been on this project since 2019. It's been a pleasure. So let me share my screen here, if I may, and I'll walk you through the highlights of what is included in this comprehensive plan that you have before you tonight. So as a comprehensive plan, it is comprehensive, right? It is a practical but aspirational, long-term guide for the city. It is the primary planning document and policy document for the city. It is an update of the 2009 comprehensive plan, which you have on your books already. And as such, it is articulating a vision of the future. It defines goals and policies and has desired future land use character through a land use plan. The planning process was initially split into three phases. As indicated with the star and the arrows coming back after the pause in 2020, we re-came back to reconfirm the vision, look at existing conditions and trends analysis again to make sure that we were really moving forward after that pause with. uh, after that pause with, uh, a plan that was supported by the community and represented the great planning work that had been done in the interim. As part of that process, uh, initially in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we had stakeholder interviews, public kickoff events, visioning workshop, as well as a vision questionnaire, community choices, questionnaires and events. And we also had a steering committee, uh, process, um, and we got pretty far in terms of drafting uh, much of the plan in some format. Uh, it was then put on pause when then we re-initiated in twenty twenty-two. Um, and again, we had some initial meetings, housing neighborhood meetings, uh, we reconfirmed the vision with a questionnaire um, and a housing neighborhoods choices questionnaire. We then, uh, came back to the public with a full revised public draft for public comment. Included in that engagement through those four years, um, we had eight public events, uh, eleven online activities, thirty-one stakeholder interviews. So those were one-on-one interviews that we had at the beginning of the process. Uh, a total of a thousand one hundred and forty-five survey responses with those eleven online activities. And we had twenty-three meetings with, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, City Council and the steering committees. As part of the more recent, uh, plan review process, um, after the the plan was presented to the public with that public draft uh, review period, we came back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a workshop on that draft plan. Um, oh, excuse me, that was prior to the, the public comment period. So we, we workshopped with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We made revisions, took that public draft to the public, uh, with an online public comment period, as well as the public open house that was held at the library. We came back for a joint Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council workshop to go through and workshop, uh, the public uh, comments that we heard and make any changes and incorporate those into the draft as necessary. We then came to public or the, uh, a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission um, and have made subsequent changes to the draft that you have in front of you. Just to highlight some of those changes that have been made since that last public hearing, uh, we have revised the objectives under goal three in chapter three, which is the urban forestry goal. I'm not going to get into the specifics, but I think you have those in your, uh, in your packet tonight. Really just strengthening and clarifying those objectives, uh, for the urban forest, uh, objectives and goals. We also added action items in the appendix. Uh, so we have an implementation action spreadsheet, um, that includes now additional items regarding urban forests and coordinating water services with other jurisdictions. We've also revised the objective four of the resource stewardship goal in chapter eleven. Uh, the slight rebranding of the cover page, uh, just to reflect, uh, some of the, the public comment that we heard. Um, and use the, the official city logo. We added a gear to the tree canopy map, uh, map three to recognize that changes have happened since twenty nineteen, since that, um, that tree canopy analysis was done. We've revised some of the photo credits that were uh, a little bit wrong. And we've also corrected the industrial and commercial land use description as it was using some previous language. So in terms of what you have in front of you, the draft that you have in front of you, it does have twelve chapters. Um, within all of these twelve chapters, uh, we hit all of the required components, uh, by state statute. Uh, but this is mirroring the same the same structure of a comprehensive plan that your current comprehensive plan has. So it should be very familiar um, in terms of the structure and the content. Uh, we've really just updated the, the information, reaffirmed the, the vision and direction, made a lot of more, uh, a lot of uh, tweaks to the, the policies or the, the goals and objectives to make them more robust and acknowledge the, the changes in community values since two thousand nine. I'll also, uh, so I will go through each one of these in a little bit more detail. Chapter one again has, uh, an overview of what the planning process is, the importance of a comprehensive plan, how to use this document, and it does have a short community profile with some over overarching information about what Sandpoint is and looks like these days. Um, we have also referenced the recent planning and, uh, planning efforts that have been done. So that includes the multimodal transportation plan, the arts, culture and historic preservation plan, parks, recreation plan, airport master plan, urban forestry management plan, all of these great plans, um, which we'll, we'll tweak or we'll come back to as we go through each of those chapters. And I'll, I'll tell you how we, how we've integrated uh, those recent planning efforts. Chapter two really articulates that community vision. Um, so on the left side of the screen, we'll have a a unified citywide vision, uh, just a single statement. And then that statement is supported by the five uh, vision or value pillars that, uh, are reflected in the City Council Strategic Plan. Um, and this chapter goes through a little bit more detail of what that looks like in terms of, of how these pillars can embody the future um, direction in, in a comprehensive plan, in the land use, um, policy document, right? So these are also brought back into each of the chapters. When we're talking about the goals and objectives, we're referencing which of these pillars that goal, uh, embodies, right? So, um, you'll see that in the, in the following chapters here uh, with regards to the goals and, and objectives. So moving into some of the content chapters, uh, community character and design is the first of those. Um, we have five different goals here. Um, and this really integrates the two thousand twenty-one Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Plan. And, uh, there is a new goal of, um, the number five here, gateways and gathering places, understanding that uh, design really can create a sense of community, a sense of place, a sense of belonging. Uh, and we've also integrated the two thousand twenty-two Urban Forestry Management Plan recommendations to strengthen the urban forest goal that we have, number three. Chapter four is land use and growth. Uh, so this chapter both has the goals and objectives that are reflected throughout the, uh, the other content chapters as well as the future land use map and categories. So in terms of what's changed with the goals, uh, for future land use, um, we've expanded the focus of neighborhoods and the mixed use development. Uh, we have focused on quality places and livability. Um, and that's reflected in streetscape design, public spaces, multimodal connectivity, a balance of uses and making sure we have reliable infrastructure. We also have a goal here, uh, number five, area of city impact development that really coordinates infrastructure and development within the ACI area of city impact. And throughout we'll have, uh, especially embodied in, in goal number one, the efficient land use through redevelopment and fill understanding that, uh, standpoint does have limitations for how and where it can grow uh, and understanding that there is appropriate development patterns for those infill redevelopment and, uh, greenfield opportunities moving forward. So this is embodied in that future land use plan, uh, a map and a, a description of categories here. This has significantly changed since the two thousand nine plan, uh, particularly because that two thousand nine plan had context areas, or what they call context areas, um, instead of more traditional land use ca- categories. Um, and so the context areas were really, uh, you know, context area one, two, three, um, they weren't very user-friendly in terms of intuitively understanding what that area uh, was trying to embody without reading through the descriptions. So we've made it hopefully a little bit more intuitive just to look at the colors and the titles of those categories on the map to understand what's intended to be uh, residential, mixed use, commercial, that type of, of thing. Um, and then we have, uh, so we have new categories. We also provide a little bit more guidance on the character, the density, the type of land uses that you might see within each of these categories. And we have added a new public quasi-public category here to, to help showcase uh, the, the schools, the public facilities, um, you know, the, the county fairgrounds, um, those areas that are publicly owned, manage those facilities, um, or public or, or, um, by a special district. Um, to understand that it's an important component of land use in the city. We also in this chapter four have a, an area of city impact map. Um, and this you'll see, you still uses the context areas that the two thousand nine plan uh, implemented. And this is intended to be updated in, in coming years after the negotiations with the city and county, um, to really understand with that, um, that sub-area plan looks like the, the intergovernmental agreement with uh, with the county, uh, to understand really how we can shrink that back if necessary, what is appropriate, uh, for future growth outside of city limits. So that's a negotiation with the county at this point. Moving into chapter five, housing and neighborhoods. This, um, this chapter pulled from the recent housing and economic analysis that Levent Consulting Group did to really understand the current conditions of housing, the implications with land use and mix, the housing market and trends and standpoint. And I will want, I do want to point out, um, that this draft, um, from the two thousand nine comprehensive plan, we added a new goal and a focus on housing affordability. This was something that came out of the community discussions from the beginning and is supported, um, by that housing analysis study that was done. The multimodal transportation chapter, of course, pulled from our recent multimodal transportation plan done in two thousand twenty-one. Um, initially that plan was, was intended to be done in tandem with the comprehensive plan. So we did have some overlap with, um, with that process at the beginning in two thousand nineteen. Um, and so there was some some public meetings and, uh, community events, uh, that we did in tandem with that process. Um, of course, they finished their plan and we put our, our comprehensive plan on hold. Um, but really, this is intended to, uh, to align with that those high-level goals and, and, uh, opportunities from that multimodal transportation plan. Parks, Recreation and Trails. Again, there's another great plan, uh, Parks and Recreation Master Plan adopted in twenty twenty and it integrates the direction that that planning process set. Chapter eight, public facilities and services and utilities, um, quite a bit was tweaked in this chapter, actually, uh, because it is such a unique chapter of having to incorporate and encompass so many different topics. Um, we did expand the two, uh, we expanded the educational goal into two goals. So you'll see, uh, number, goal number two and goal number three. We've kind of split those out to understand that there is a goal of, of partnering with educational institutions and, and school districts. And then there is a broader conversation about wanting to support education lifelong learning, even if that's not in a school setting. We've also split the health and safety goal into two. Um, so you'll see public safety number five and safety by design number six. Um, so it's understanding the kind of the intricacies of, of the service providers for fire, police and emergency response. Uh, but then understanding that design also has a role in creating a safe environment for the public. So looking at crime prevention principles as we plan and as we deliver service, but also in how we are designing our spaces. We've added a goal about public health and access to health resources, number seven. And we've added, uh, goal number eight about responsive government and representative civic engagement. And this really, uh, uh, I want to make sure that this hearkens back to one of the five principles, um, the vision principles of responsive government. Chapter nine, jobs and economic development, again, was pulled heavily from the data and implications from the housing and economic analysis. And we, we've added a new goal on the resilient year-round economy. Uh, so that's number three here. Uh, no, sorry, uh, number one of, we really, uh, expanded that to recognize that seasonal workforce issues are, are prevalent and, um, the objectives under that goal are targeting how to make sure that we can have industry year-round, um, and a workforce that is not reliant on the ups and downs or seasonality of, of, um, schweizer. So we also added a new goal about innovation to reflect current talent and the local entrepreneurs um, that have really, uh, helped move economic development in, in Sandpoint over the last, uh, decade, I'd say. There is also, again, a new goal about Sandpoint's position, engagement in a rural or regional economy, number three. Recognizing that while Sandpoint is the county seat, it is a very important, uh, community hub in the region, um, not just because it, it's a county seat, but with the medical, uh, industry and all that, um, that understanding that role and coordinating regionally is, is very important to, um, not just for Sandpoint, but for the region. Chapter ten, airport facilities. This chapter was the first chapter that we updated in two thousand nineteen. And I went through a full hearing and adoption process at the end of twenty nineteen and has, no substantial changes have been made since then. So, uh, again, this, this hits the, uh, the requirements that the state has pulled out for, um, airport facilities in particular. Um, and we aren't, we haven't recommended anything new since then. So that's already in your twenty nineteen updated plan. Chapter eleven, natural resources and hazards is the final, uh, content chapter here. And we've also reworked this in a number of ways. So we've expanded the resource protection goal into three goals. Um, and we've recognized the ecological importance of the watersheds and riparian habitats. We've integrated Bonner County's wildfire, wildfire protection plan and the county's hazard mitigation plan under chap, under goal number four. And we've integrated more energy conservation and sustainability standards, um, which also includes a new dark sky direction here. So we've really made this a much more robust chapter, um, focusing on all of the resources that Sandpoint has. The final chapter, uh, before we go into appendices is the implementation. So of course, without, uh, having a, a plan to, to implement this, um, it hope, hopefully it will not be a, a plan that sits on the shelf, um, the way that we have have targeted and tailored the implementation chapter. Uh, we have, uh, plan management, so understanding how you can update the plan, how you can keep it relevant in the coming years. We have a section about how this plan will be used for development review and consistency with the plan, uh, for upcoming uh, zoning changes or anything, uh, development related coming down the pipe. And then implementation projects and programs, we do provide an overview of what we've recommended. Um, but the bulk of and detail of what those implementation projects and programs are are housed in Appendix A. So what we've, we've categorized those implementation projects and programs into six types, um, which include zoning code updates, supporting plans and studies, new or existing programs and services, capital projects and investments, partnerships and agreements. new or existing programs and services, capital projects and investments, partnerships and agreements, and new funding opportunities. So as part of the the appendices that we have, as I've mentioned, the implementation table is a really important and useful tool to review and also to keep active as you've after the adoption of this plan. This will be a really important tool for staff to review every year with budget decisions and understanding departmental priorities and can be updated regularly to share and showcase what has been done to implement the plan. Appendix B, Acronyms and Definitions, just to make sure that we're we're all using the the same understanding and baseline understanding of of how we're defining certain terms throughout the plan. Idaho Regulatory Taking Act guideline number three is another state requirement and is also used for all development proposals and and comprehensive plan updates. Appendix D, Public Engagement Summary. This has a lot more detail about all the touchpoints we had with the public, the conversations, the takeaways from those discussions. And so it's it includes all the engagement that we did since two thousand nineteen through the the more recent public engagement that we did this year and last year. And then appendices E and F, these are planning efforts that have have been happening recently. So the downtown design competition, again, we don't, that's pending at this point, but will be added as an appendices. And then the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Master Plan is adopted as reference in as an appendix. So I know that was kind of a a lot to get through, a tour of the 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 plan and the document you have to consider in front of you tonight. But I am here for any answer, any questions you may have as they come up. Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Miriam, for that presentation. Counsel, any questions?
Shall I start?
Please.
Thank you so much.
Well, Jason, before you start, I want to say that I have a relatively concise but long list. I'm hoping it's not tedious for everybody. I'm going to try to get through it quickly, but you start.
I'm just wondering, is this the best time for questions for staff as well or just for Miriam? Or should we hold those for after the public forum? Actually, I think it's best if I ask these first. Okay. Do you mind if I start really quick?
I want you to start.
Okay. First of all, just a comment, I I appreciate members of the public that stuck around for this most important public hearing of the evening. Getting involved at this stage, I think, will prevent some of the frustration later on when we make decisions based on the plan that we're adopting here today. So thanks to those who did stick around. And Mr. Mayor, since you can't see the audience, it's not many. Most people took off rather than doing the hard work of sticking around and being involved in this part. So I I do want to thank you, Miriam. It's been exciting to see this evolve over four years. I do just one point of correction, just you mentioned the watershed recreation plan right at the end there. Page seventy-five of the document does say that that is still being developed. So just since it is now, it has been adopted since June, it might be worth updating page seventy-five to acknowledge that that is now adopted and included as an appendix. Let's see. Okay. I'm going to let, I'm going to jump to Deb really quick and let you get started. That's that's just one easy one. I should go through my notes a little bit more thoroughly.
Okay, you go through your notes.
Sound like you're more prepared.
Okay, yeah. So I did this by page number, Miriam, so I don't know if you can pull the comp plan up. That'd be really helpful for me. Okay, my first comment is on page ten. Okay, and let's see, large glacial north of six minutes. Okay, so I guess that's fourth paragraph, northwest city limits and just south of Schweitzer. City of Sandpoint, significant land owner within the Little Sand Creek watershed. My comment was that I think it's really important that we put the acreage right in there in the beginning of the document. I know it appears later in the document, but I just feel like I don't know what that is. And then I also know that this is in many of our other documents, but I would like a little bit of reference to the intelligent individuals who lived in this city, I believe it was around nineteen ten, and started to purchase the majority of that watershed. So I don't know if it was nineteen ten exactly. I want to say it was nineteen oh nine or nineteen ten. I think it would be really nice as people read through this that they realize the significance by the timeframe that we've actually owned that watershed. Okay, are you ready for the next comment?
Yeah, hit me. Thanks.
Page twenty-two. Okay, so neighborhoods, does any example really force?
Counsel?
Yes.
I would suggest that we get through the public comment first. Now is an appropriate time for you to ask questions of Miriam and if you need to, but I think it's really important for you to hear from the public before you just provide commentary if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine with me.
And for the record, counselor, nineteen eighteen was the first year that the city purchased land up in the watershed there.
Okay, thank you. I'll correct that in my notes, Mr. Mayor. I think I get stuck on that date because that's the year my grandmother was born.
For mayor, I I believe the attorney has advised opening the public hearing at this time.
Okay, thank you. That was a little unclear to me. And I just wanted, there are no questions from counsel at this point? Comments, but no questions?
I I think we might have some questions, but we've been advised it would be best to hear from the public first and then give those questions and comments during deliberation, perhaps.
That sounds fine. Well, now proceed with the public hearing. For the record, any written comments received in time were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council members. If you're participating on Zoom and wish to speak, you'll need a working microphone on your phone or computer. When your name is called, you'll see a prompt on your screen asking if you'd like to unmute. You'll need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. As announced earlier, those here in chambers who would like to speak will need to complete a sign-up form available on the table by the door and hand it to staff. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. City policy provides that the presiding officer may now allow may allow time to be gifted during a public hearing. Allow this option this evening for those present here in chambers. For those here in the room who wish to speak, you may gift your time to another speaker who is also present in the room. You may also, you may do so only once, and the maximum amount of time any single speaker will be allowed is six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state who has gifted time to you when you approach the dais. You both must have completed a sign-up form to do so. Please note that this ability to gift time is allowed allowed only during public hearings. Council members, if you have a question for the person speaking, please be sure to ask the question at the time of their testimony before the public hearing is closed. For those for those speaking, as you begin your testimony, please introduce yourself and state whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Madam Clerk, who is our first speaker?
Kyle Schreiber.
Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. Thanks for listening to me speak tonight. And I do want to thank everybody that was involved in in creating this document. It has been an enormous project. Personally, I was going to workshops back in the pre-COVID times, and I think I filled out every single survey that the city has put out. I was one of those thirty-one phone interviews. I do have a couple of comments. I'll try to be brief. Our two thousand nine comp plan included a goal CD dash two policy E, quote, deny extension of urban services in ACI for low-density development, end quote. And that policy is supported by one of the Idaho Local Land Use Act's stated purposes, quote, to encourage urban and urban-type development within incorporated cities, end quote. And I think it's supported by our community. Many folks support that quality, that policy, and I believe that it is the responsible way to manage our growth. But for whatever reason, that policy is conspicuously absent from this draft, and that policy needs to be included in our comp plan moving forward. Not only to prevent urban suburban sprawl that is difficult and costly to provide services to, but also to avoid legal disputes with developers. You know, many people are really unhappy with Sandpoint's decision to provide water service to a development in Kootenay's ACI that was not annexed. And I'm not here to debate whether that move was in violation of this policy. But in light of that, we also need a policy providing clarification that moving forward, we will deny extension of urban services to neighboring cities, neighboring cities ACIs without express consent from that city. Moving down, looking at Appendix A, row three, regarding the waterfront design competition. I think it's unwise to commit to implementation of a project that we haven't seen yet, especially with the timing listed as short term. Call me crazy, but I foresee a packed meeting where residents are told that we must implement an unpopular design because it's in the comp plan to do so. Likewise, with row fifteen, residents and counselors alike have voiced concern about the multimodal transportation plan. And those concerns need to be addressed before we create an imperative to implement it. Thank you.
Mr. Schreiber, one one quick question. What was the original code, or I'm sorry, section from the two thousand nine plan that you quoted regarding responsible urban growth?
Yeah, goal CD two dash or CD dash two policy E.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jeremy Grimm.
Jeremy Grimm, for the record, City of Sandpoint resident, candidate for mayor. Thank you so much, council members, staff, and Miriam at Logan Simpson. What a difficult and challenging period of time to perform this task with COVID and everything else that's been underway. I want to just address three, three quick things here regarding where you're at in the process now. Back in two thousand seven, when we kicked off the two thousand nine comp plan, by the time it reached this point to the council, the council then held twenty-three special meetings. So I want to just encourage you at this point that this is the recommendation from the Planning Commission. I think you should take some time to have a workshop, go through your questions, your issues. Again, when Councilwoman Newton was on the council, left earlier, she spent twenty-three minutes, I mean, meetings and went line by line. I'm not saying it's going to take you twenty-three workshops, but certainly take your time and make sure this thing is tight because this is our, this is our literal Bible for the next some period of time. Secondly, you know, I I have to echo Kyle's comments. That's exactly one of the two points I wrote down. The extension of urban services into the county, if you're not aware, it can accelerate urban sprawl. It can cause a host of issues with services, providers, and and more or less, it can encourage growth in areas where city services really are not available or efficiently served. And that's the big one, is efficiently served. So by providing water sewer, the densities can be increased in the county, and you have a greater population, which means more services are required. So I just encourage you, it's not in this current version, which in my opinion really weakens our position or the future of people who sit in those seats, their position as they address these challenging issues. Finally, the last point I want to make is regarding the area of city impact. I had mentioned the last time this was available for public comment that there's no language or comment regarding coordination or collaboration with Bonner County in terms of collecting or establishing development impact fees in the ACI. Bonner County has adopted impact fees on behalf of Northside Fire, and they're looking at them for other folks. I think it's one of the most critical things that you can do as the council is to ensure that you you work with Bonner County to have them collect impact fees for new development in the ACI. Those impact fees can then go to address the specific issues that that growth will have on the city of Sandpoint, most notably Pine, Baldi and Gooby Road, to expand those underpasses. If all those people in the growth area pay impact fees, they pay for it, not the citizens of Sandpoint, and they're causing the growth. So I really encourage you to include that portion in the ACI.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Really appreciate those thoughtful comments.
Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Grant Simmons.
Grant Simmons, Sandpoint resident. And I'm sort of sad that nobody else from the planning and zoning was here to speak on behalf of the comp plan. Oh, there's there is one here. I'm sorry. Apologize. Well, I'm going to speak to it because I love it. And the reason I love it, I'm going to tell you by way of the story. And here's the thing about the comp plan. If you send it back to us a couple of times, I think the the comments that were just brought up, I think is probably a pretty good idea. And the story I'm about ready to tell you, I think will demonstrate that. And I'll tell you this also, my political fortunes are going to go up or down in the next two minutes and twenty seconds. So strap in.
We love stories.
So here's the story. Monday night, I had a very unfortunate conversation with a member of the public, and I did not handle it well, and to some extent, I hope to make amends. But to the extent at this event, an assertion was made that I can't call this place home because I haven't lived half my life here. Weird rule, never heard it. Maybe it's a thing. However, every single one of my three kids has gone through every single one of the grades in school up to sophomore. I got one in high school, I got one in middle school, got one in elementary, gone through the entire public school system. Seen it all. They were born at the hospital here. It's why I decided that if I'm going to stay here, I'm going to kind of throw my back into the community a little bit. And I've been on the foundation board at the hospital for a long time. My kids were born there. They've saved family lives. Let's give back. Right? And with planning and zoning. And so when I look at the planning and zoning, a lot of the stitching together in there of the thinking was around like movement, right? Because we got to think about kids. Spent a lot of time with my kids heading downtown. And believe me, I know the kids around here. I'm going to have probably fifty of them come through my house this week. Most folks know where I live. It's the McGovern house. Right? So I'm tapped into the kids. And so I said, why am I grumpy about this conversation? I've got such an opportunity. So I asked my three kids to say, hey, look, here's the sort of broad vision for Travers. Just go ask questions. The the senior nailed it. She actually put together a little picture of it's out of the comp plan of what Travers will look like combined with what was presented last time publicly. And said, look, you've played on Travers, you love Travers. Would you rather have that or would you rather have this? And so she started putting sending me videos, and literally I received forty-eight responses, forty-three yes, please, four no, we love it. However, I think the real travesty is none of them knew about it. None of the high school kids know about it. So to the extent this stuff is important to the kids, the kids don't know about it. But apparently they like it, and I might be taking up tennis. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Appreciate your work on the comp plan.
Molly McCann.
Molly doesn't have a stomach for it. She had some great comments because she studies this stuff.
Greg Flint.
My daughter Heather wrote this. She is a former city planner in Santa Barbara. I strongly support the proposed amendment from Planning and Zoning Commission related to trees. My advocacy is to support embedded stronger value statements in our comprehensive plan about thoughtful placement of structures that helps preservation of trees. This advocacy is not a veiled attempt to obstruct projects. This is to ensure we can be more creatively allowing for win-win solutions with less environmental impact. There are two missing policies proposed that I would like to support and advocate to support the recommendations by Heather Flinchado, John Gaddis, Greg Flint, Reed Weber. and advocate to support the recommendations by Heather Flinchato, John Gaddis, Greg Flint, Reed Weber. When P and Z directed staff to address tree preservation in Chapter Three, a key tree policy we had recommended in Chapter Five may have been overlooked. Heritage trees are only addressed in implementation, but not addressed in any policy goal. This is a long-term goal and is needed now. Add one new policy statement, Chapter Three, Urban Forestry. Sandpoint values preservation of heritage trees for their cultural, aesthetic, environmental, and economic benefits and the long-term health and vitality of our city. Definition footnote, a heritage tree, quote, "is a tree or collection of trees that is acknowledged and valued for the unique characteristics that set it apart from other similar trees, including size, giant, species, diameter, culture, historic value, as well as other criteria the tree committee may later define." I wish we had a tree committee. In other words, this can be updated later. Amended existing policy statement, Chapter Five. Housing in neighborhoods, Goal Three, Existing Neighborhoods. Maintain and enhance neighborhood tree canopies and provide flexibility in design standards and placement of structures when reasonable accommodations can preserve heritage trees. Why now do we need these goals? Because implementation may or may not happen. Change can easily be at the whim of available funding staff, work programs, and competing priorities. Thus, it's still important to have the heritage tree goal as well that can stand the test of time and be a guide for the future. This is not a requirement for preservation or a limit on development. This simply provides an opportunity for city and staff planners to work creatively to achieve the goals in the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Flint. Appreciate your comments.
Can this be copied and put before you all?
I believe we all read that.
Have you all?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we read all the letters that were provided by you all, so thank you.
All right.
Ellie Sussness.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. Good to see you. Thank you for having me. I'm Ellie Sussness, the Chair of the Sandpoint Arts, Culture, and Historical Preservation Commission. And I was on the steering committee back in 2019. We did a lot of work then, and I'm super excited to see how all of the plans that have come about since then have been woven into this document. And I would like to thank everyone who worked on it. Once all the changes are made, if there are, and it's approved, I'm very excited to get to work implementing our goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sussness.
I'm going to go to Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Heather Flint Shadow.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can you see me?
No.
Not quite.
Okay. All right. That's all right. My name is Heather Flint Shadow, and I'm writing to provide comments on the comprehensive plan. I appreciate all the work that staff and city council and planning commission have done to date. For context, I am a professional urban planner and environmental designer with past work in long-range comprehensive planning for local government and 25 years of experience in the field doing master planning, redevelopment, environmental planning and policy. And I'm focusing my comments specifically on the tree preservation goals. And I really want to say how much I appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission for giving time and attention to the recommendations that you have already received. I am a little disappointed that the people that did provide testimony had asked to be noticed, and we had no knowledge of this hearing. So we were not able to provide written comments by that time. So I do want to let you know that what my father was reading from is actually new. And so I hope that you might be able to take that paper and put it in the record. My family has lived in North Idaho since 1991, and my parents have been residents in Sandpoint since 1998. It's a special place that's growing quickly, and development pressures are increasing, which creates the tension to retain livability and quality while also supporting change. Sandpoint has a significant tree canopy, and as a planning consultant, when I often advise cities and local governments on policy and design, I help them think comprehensively to leverage actions for their greatest impact. I frequently see cities becoming the victim of their own success, losing the qualities that make them desirable in the first place because they lack the specific policy that operationalized bigger vision goals. Significant concerns have been raised by people that there are few missing pieces. And one of them is this piece of actually putting it in the plan that you value and encourage the preservation of heritage trees for their cultural, aesthetic, environmental, and economic benefits and the long-term health and vitality of our city. So that is the missing piece that we asked, that I don't think that the planning and zoning commissioners caught because they were just focused on, you know, some of the other policies. So we really appreciate, and I want to advocate and support the proposed amendments that you have before you, and also put this in front of you that if you look at the, the new information with this language, we're giving you a, a policy statement to encourage preservation of heritage trees. These are different than just healthy trees. You, if you look at Chapter Three, it only talks about healthy trees. That's not the same thing as heritage trees, which are significant in size, special in their unique species or other qualities, and that you add something that gives you the flexibility for win-win solutions with a Chapter Five goal that talks about maintaining and enhancing your neighborhood tree canopies. You already have that as, as letter I, but add, provide flexibility in design standards and placement of structures when reasonable accommodations can preserve heritage trees. That will give you the tool to be creative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flinchato. Appreciate those comments.
Reed Weber.
Good evening. My name is Reed Weber. I am a Bonner County resident, but Donna met tonight that I'm in the ACI, so. Who knows when, but I will be a city resident someday. And I just had comments to kind of echo those about the heritage tree and preservation of, we're basically creating this language in the policy and goals for heritage trees more than just an action item. It could get checked off a list, but have it something that we can look to. Hope you can high up on this list of aspirations. I think it could get, and we get out in front of be proactive in terms of addressing a lot of the frustrations seen even today in the city. So having the, the community come together, identify these areas that are truly important to us, and then work with development simultaneously around in a creative way around these areas. Also an architect, so it's kind of part of my job is just creatively working within the environment and the space around you and identifying these key elements of our community, in this case being heritage tree, heritage trees and how those could be marked as important aspects of the city that we do carry into the future. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Appreciate those comments.
Rebecca Holland.
Good evening, Rebecca Holland, longtime resident of Bonner County. I want to echo the support that I heard with comments from Greg Flint and his daughter. I've read through this about the heritage trees, and it's good. I hope it is adopted. In looking at she, his daughter struck on a word that I did too, and that's value. And when you look at heritage, it means belonging to the culture of a people. It comes from existing and, and the importance of the past and continues to be important to the people. We know that some of the trees, big shade trees that create great big canopies in our big public parks are important to the people, and they mean a great deal to them. Some of them commemorate some people that have passed here. We know that the Travers family has come to you and talked to you about their father, who championed youth sports, and his ashes and some of the family are there. Recently, I was called by a friend, an old friend who hasn't been here for a long time. Maybe, maybe some of you remember Annie Jackson. I'm sure you do, Kate. Taking a note, maybe? Okay, she and her husband, they started the original winery here. And she messaged, messaged me to, messaged me to say that some of the trees that have been planted in memorial of the, the people that were killed in the tragic sailing accident out at Sunnyside. I don't know if any of you guys remember that. Many of us do that were here in the eighties, that were just young boaters with kids at Sunnyside. It was really tragic, and they, there's trees that are planted. And some of these trees are looking, are being looked at to be cut down, just like that. And those trees have value. They have value to the people that remember them, value to their families. Those, those are heritage trees. There should be some value there and not a flippant, well, we'll just replace them three to one. Don't worry, what kind of canopy do you get out of that? These are issues. You guys. This reflects on the values, the community values. Are you, are you a council that can honor these kinds of values for our community? I'm going to give you 20 seconds to think about it before Shelby, and I don't need to be thanked for my comments because my comments just go into the air, just more into the air. And it's a sad reality here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to check on Zoom one more time. Mr. Mayor, for the public hearing, I don't have anyone additionally who has signed up to speak at this time, unless there's anyone else who wishes to. That is all who have signed up to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. And at this time, council can deliberate and ask any further questions of staff.
Who's going to go first?
Just really quickly, hi, thanks. Amy, with the added language that we just heard about the heritage trees, what would that process look like for us to be able to do?
Being that it's a, an additional policy likely, and I'll defer to Fonda, but that may require an additional public hearing. But again, it just depends how many changes come forward.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So heritage trees, what about heritage trees on private property? Or are we just talking about public property?
Well, that, that was the big discussion at the planning commission because we completely appreciate all the input that we received on the value of trees and heritage trees. And we tried to balance what we put into the comprehensive plan under goals and objectives and policies, as well as implementation, with the knowledge that we also have an urban forestry master plan. And that's where the meat of urban forestry work will occur. So again, our comprehensive plan is, is trying to stay broad and not get too far into the weeds. What we did add was, let's see, we added an implementation. Let's see, explore and implement incentives for existing tree preservation with an emphasis on heritage trees, including updates to the zoning code and the urban forestry master plan programs. That's where the actions actually are going to occur. We can put policies in the, the plan, but it's really the implementation of those policies. And that's going to occur at both zoning code changes and implementation of the urban forestry master plan. And that's why the commission felt that the language we have in the plan and the language added as a result of the hearing did address the, the needs to protect existing trees, both looking at what we're doing on our public property that we have control of, as well as creating possible incentives for how to protect on private property.
Amy, just to clarify, you keep referencing zoning code, but there was a reference made to, would we then be updating building code in the sense of if there's a heritage tree in a certain place? And, you know, the setbacks, et cetera, and all those things. Can we make a special note to make sure this gets addressed on that level? Because I think that's where this detail needs to occur, correct?
Right. And, and that's what we're looking at is how do you build incentives into your codes to allow for potential deviations from the standards if something has been identified as a heritage tree?
Right. Okay. So are we making plans or notes so that we can address it in the building code? I guess is.
It would be the zoning code because it would likely result in changes to setbacks.
Okay, I thought setbacks were more a part of.
Zone.
Part of the zoning code.
Building code refers to structures. Zoning codes refer to.
So as a private property owner, if I want to cut down a heritage tree on my property, am I going to be able to do that, or am I going to be fined, or?
The, the plan's not getting into that level of detail. What we're trying to come up with is how do we incent, how do we educate people on the value? And how do we incentivize people to protect those trees? So it's, we can put it in the, in the comprehensive plan, but there's a lot of implementation steps before we get to the point where we have something that can actually be implemented.
And enforced.
The issue is, the issue is, I understand it, in Mr. Flynn's case, is he doesn't want to cut down what would be described as heritage trees. He wants to preserve those trees, but our zoning code would currently require that those trees be cut down if he wants to build what he wants to build on his property. So providing incentives in the case of, you know, the, the variance process is costly and time consuming. It requires public hearings and, you know, lots of application fees and everything like that. But if we could have a simple waiver in place for the protection of heritage trees so that maybe with a much, at a much lower cost, that, that's the kind of incentive I envision. Why we'd lower the barriers to protecting trees while simultaneously allowing private landowners to develop their property in the way that is permissible within those zones. So the incentive doesn't mean to be the cities giving you money to protect trees. It's the saying, we're not going to charge you $6,000 to go through the expensive, time-consuming variance process, hire Mr. Grimm to come argue for you at a planning and zoning meeting. Rather, you sign this form, it gets maybe approved administratively or through a simple, you know, consent agenda item at a council meeting or something. Doesn't need to go through that costly. That, that's an incentive as far as I understand it. But we don't have anything currently in, in our comprehensive plan that articulates what a heritage tree is, even in this final draft. So what I hear from the, you know, community in this case is let's articulate what a heritage tree is and just implement some simple waivers or something within our zoning code so that it doesn't have to go through the full. I mean, in four years being up here, I've only heard like one or two variance applications. They're extremely rare. They're extremely costly, time consuming, and a huge headache. But if we want to encourage infill, like we say we do, we want to encourage cottage-type developments, townhome-type developments, but we also want to protect heritage trees. Let's make that process a little bit easier so that we can have more dense infill development while also not requiring that citizens cut down these 180-year-old trees. If I understand, I see Mr. Flint nodding, so I assumed it's kind of what you're getting at. Okay.
That is correct. I would just also say that while that sounds simple. Um, also say that while that sounds simple. Uh, when you're creating. Incentives or waivers to zoning for something that is living. And you're allowing a deviation from a structure. And the next owner comes and they decide they don't want to preserve that heritage tree. Those are the kinds of things we need to. Really think about when we are putting forward incentives and waivers. So it's the balance of. Uh. You know, to your point, we're trying to balance many things. We're trying to balance housing. With urban forestry, with economic development, uh, so. It is true, we're trying to create those, how readily we can do that. It's, it's, it's more of a challenge than it sounds.
Yeah.
I guess is what I'm saying.
I, I, I maybe, you know, uh, going a little bit beyond what. Uh, is, is appropriate for the comp plan tonight, but the idea that. Uh, in exchange for this waiver, you agree to place this tree in some sort of conservation easement so that it's permanently protected and. Future owners of that property would lose the right to cut that tree down because in the past, the previous developers were given. A right that they wouldn't have otherwise have been given from the city. I'm just something to put out there. I don't know if there's precedent for that. I know conservation easements are used all over. North Idaho to protect heritage farmland, to protect heritage forests. Um, I don't know if there's such a precedent for urban conservation easements where. Particular stand of trees or particular old growth tree within city limits could be permanently conserved. Um, you know, assuming it doesn't die or get sick and need to be removed for health and safety stand, uh, reasons. But in exchange for this, you know, waiver or what it is, I'm just saying there, there's probably ways we can get creative to incentivize. Conservation of, of these precious trees.
And you're right, that's beyond the scope of.
I, I agree, that's not gonna go in our comp plan, but I'm, if we're, if this is something that we want to address in the short term. It's probably important to start thinking creatively. Cause I agree, it's, it's not, nothing's as simple as just, oh, you want to save a tree here, build wherever you want, go right up to the lot line, you know, you don't. That's, we can't just do that. Okay.
Okay.
Andy, did you have another?
Nope.
No, thank you.
Um, okay.
Are you, are you ready?
Is the public forum over now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
You took over, um. I'm ready if you're not.
Um, I'll go, let's check in, so, um. Miriam, you're still there. Uh, page thirty-three, I had a question. Um, and this actually was from, uh, this question was. Uh, based on a conversation I've had with a, a local architect as well, who I think has concerns about some of this language. Uh, facilitate adaptive reuse of historic structures and reinvestment in historic districts to much, in, and mature neighborhoods. Um, I've heard concerns from local architects about proposals from developers who have come to Sandpoint and proposed. Uh, what, what might be described as adaptive reuse of historic structures downtown wherein they. Um, put steel, uh, I beams inside that structure and then build up to the maximum sixty-five foot height on top of. What's currently like a thirty story historic building. I don't, I want to make sure we're not incentivizing that, we're not making that a priority or value. That type of adaptive reuse, and I'm wondering if adaptive reuse requires some sort of definition, you know, renovation might be a better word. Um, whereas some of the proposals that have come to local architects that have been thankfully rejected. Uh, by those firms have included things like what I just described. Which would basically put like a glass and steel building on top of a historic structure. So I don't know if there's any, Amy, do you have any, you know, what is meant, I guess what my question is, what is meant by adaptive reuse here? What is our intent with that term?
Amy, before you, I'll just throw mine in there because I got page thirty-three too. So all of these goals scream code updates without code. There isn't a way to enforce these objectives with private landowners and development.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that we're, have forethought that that's where we're going next and I think code update is. Now that you don't have to work on this massive document is probably.
Right, if, if you look at appendix A, that, that is where we're starting to lay out how we implement the plan. Uh, but before that is the downtown design competition. And that I believe will kind of be a bridge between some of these goals and objectives. And getting us closer to what should those code updates look like to address what you're asking about.
Okay, so, so we're not, we're not putting this as a goal. To, uh. I guess what I'm, what I'm concerned about is by having this language, it might. Send the signal to developers that, oh, here's an old building that needs some reinvestment. Why don't I, while I'm at it, put thirty. Feet of it, of, you know, steel and glass structure on top of it. Um, but you're saying in the next few months as the design competition wraps up, we could expect to see some proposed code amendments that would prevent that sort of. Reinvestment.
Or direction towards how to update the codes, but clearly these are all. Um, objectives that are point us in a direction of. How we want to update our codes. Um, adaptive reuse is just that, is taking an old structure and finding a new use for it, so it's not necessarily adding on to it. Um, it's just. Encouraging reuse of an existing structure versus eliminating the structure and starting from scratch.
Good.
Um, back to, oh. Mary.
I was just gonna say, it, it is in our glossary of terms, adaptive reuse. Um, so if we need to strengthen that or clarify our definition, we certainly can, but it is as Amy has stated. Um, just a conversion, not an addition to that, that, uh, structure.
Um, back to page twenty-two, this is a simple and easy one. It talks about livable, livable community, bike, walk, et cetera, all ages. But we forgot to add and abilities. So I just want to add and abilities. Cause I'm the physical therapist. I feel useful. Sorry, it's getting late. Um, then page thirty, um. Let's see, I have to find out where exactly it was. It was forestry, new trees, residents, urban forest. Neighbor Woods was a former program created to provide trees at no cost. And then it's, uh, let's see. Additional programming may come out of the urban forestry management plan. So I guess my comment would be, um, additional programming. Will come out of urban forestry manager planning instead of May, that's just too. Out there, I think the, the. Citizens in the public have already told us that they are not okay with a May. They want additional programming to come out to support the urban forestry management plan.
Also, I believe we just planted several trees under the neighbor woods program last week. So I think that pro, that, that might be incorrect that it's a program that, uh, formerly existed, at least our, our, uh.
I think we had a fade and maybe we're having a, a re-brightening.
Yeah, so it might need to be updated though, because I, as from, as far as a public. Notice that went out about three days ago, we did just plant several trees under the, along Pine Street.
There is budget that has been in this year's budget that funded those trees along Pine Street. And in the budget that you approved for next year, there is tree planting budget and that is our traditional budget for the neighbor woods program.
Okay.
Okay, I just remember there had done some variation in that and, um, discussion over it, um, let's see. Um, goal three E. Um, page thirty-four, goal three E, educate and engage the public to improve understanding of the urban forest's value to the community. Um, so I guess that my comment was gonna be, um. Yes, we need to do that and make sure that it happens if it's one of our goals and it sounds like the neighbor woods. It, we have that in the budget for next year. Um. Sorry, let's see, oh my goodness, what just happened? Just lost my comments. What is going on? Okay, um, page thirty-five, I had a comment on, um. Sorry, I just went real specific and. It's about the alleyways, accessible alleyways. My brain is really having trouble with that because, um. What does that mean? First of all, we've never paved, um, the, you know. The private landowners are responsible for them, they're a disaster, we don't plow them. Wh-what does that mean? And what is our goal with that?
I don't, I don't know that it's across the board, but it is looking at. Using alleyways, whether it's, you know, in, increasing use of alleyways downtown as public gathering spaces. Um, like the one alley we have that is all public art.
Right.
Um, and just. Use, utilizing those as a resource for community gathering space. To continue doing that, we're not, we're not saying all alleyways are something that's gonna become accessible.
But aren't some alleyways, they belong to the property owner, like our alley? Um, we know it belongs to the city, but then the next block over, the alley is owned by the landowners. So.
Yeah, they must have vacated the alley on that block.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this goal does articulate public alleyways.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Not neighborhoods, those are all private alleyways.
Yeah.
Are they? No, they're not, because they're public right of ways. So they're not private, they're public.
There are, there are rare exceptions where there's, uh, where private property owners, uh, own the alleyway, but they're, they're.
They're rare.
An exception.
Right, so I guess this is just a very confusing thing to me because I think, um. Because of budgetary restrictions, we've had no other option but to kind of turn our back on the alleyways. I'm sure all the council and most of the citizens in this town would love to have them paved and plowed, but that's not a reality, so. I'm struggling with, with, um. Accessible and whatnot, so anyway, just throwing it out there, we can move on, because it's.
Maybe add the word public, public streets, public alleyways?
I, I think it is, um, talking about downtown alleys that are generally paved, but. If it's confusing, we can either take out alleyways or we could just call it downtown alleyways.
I think we need to clarify it a little bit because I think if the public looks at that, I mean, if it's just a matter of adding a word. To.
So downtown.
Within that urban interface or, yeah, I. I don't know, what's the rest of the council think on that?
I agree that adding downtown would clarify that. There's no expectation in our comp plan that we're gonna maintain your alleyway for public access. And I, I, I could, I could imagine somebody in the future pointing at this and saying, why aren't you plowing my alleyway?
Exactly, and that's my concern.
Yeah.
So, and, and I know that it's not, you know, if. Yeah, anyway, nothing on that, let's, let's keep moving on. Um. Okay, page thirty-nine refers to land use map five and then you have to go to page forty-five to see it. So can we maybe just stick a little page reference in there? Because once I started reading about this, I was like, well, I want to see land use five and then. I had to scroll so far down that I just got lost in the weeds.
I could do you one better, Councilwoman, I can put a hyperlink.
Oh, gosh, that would be so amazing. Yeah, I'm old, technology, um, betrays me, okay, so then I'm gonna skip a whole bunch of pages and I don't even get anywhere until page sixty-four. Um, fifty-six. There's sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, somewhere on page sixty-four. Um. Non-motorized right under the pedestrian bicycle paragraph. Um, go halfway down that paragraph to the right border and it says most int need. N has a T on it. Sorry, I read the whole thing. Page sixty-seven. Um, okay, so if we look at the map on page sixty-seven, sorry, I gotta slide my notes over. And if you blow that up, um, the dark green lines are current multi-use paths. Is that my correct understanding? Okay, so the way I'm seeing this, and I have old eyes, um, it looks like there is a multi-use path. That goes from, let's call it the Conoco there. Um, all the way to First Avenue. That does not exist. Now, there's a multi-use path that goes behind the powerhouse. But there is no, I would love if there was a multi-use path right there, but that map's incorrect. Unless I'm just not seeing the colors well.
I will defer to staff on this. This is pulled from the multimodal transportation plan directly. So, um, if that, if that map is incorrect, it should be updated in that plan as well.
It's, it's there, it's behind Powder Hound. It's, it's a.
Well, I know, but it's not actually on the road, the way it's shown, that, that line should be redrawn. Because it looks like it goes all the way to first, but there's. I mean, it's a tiny map, but it's inaccurate.
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit inaccurate.
Mm-hmm, a little bit.
Um.
But that's a place that, you know, through downtown revitalization, we did. We have envisioned, you know, carrying the path down to Powder Hound and the, the gas stations.
Well, then we.
But I understand it's not there now.
It's, it's not there now, so it should be dashes and that's fine, if we change it to dashes, I just want it to be accurate.
That needs to be amended in the multimodal plan though.
Okay, yeah.
It's just taken out of that.
It's because that was taken out of that, and then we have, um, page sixty-eight. Um. Okay, so I just want to point out, point of reference, um, page sixty-eight C. Implement and maintain a network of perimeter routes for commercial truck and bus traffic to reduce downtown congestion. So we've had lots of discussions about that. There it is in the comp plan. Um, we're waiting on a lot of data, but there it is in the comp plan giving us direction. Enough said. Um. Page sixty-eight, um, E, limit the number of approaches onto collectors and arterials to minimize safety, blah, blah, blah. Um. I've always disagreed with this, so this is an opinionated statement, but, um. It, it totally works against, um. It's just totally in conflict with developing a good street pattern and increasing. Um, and it actually increases congestion at, sorry, it actually increases congestion at one access point. So we end up with things along Boyer, like our new University of Idaho property that's gonna be, except for one small section of it. One big, long, six-foot fence almost from the tracks all the way to Schweitzer Cut Off Road. So, um. I know there's all kinds of. Engineering and there's these laws and those ordinances. But if we want to develop a grid system, then that's what we should be developing. The other end of Boyer works great and everybody uses it as a collector, so that's just an opinionated statement, so. Um, maybe some thoughts for planning and council when we're approving different things, how we go about approving them with this. Um. I, I, I'd like to see it changed, but, um, page sixty-nine. Um. F. Improve and maintain street, streetscapes for all modes of travel through design treatments that enhance human scale along street corridors. Um, just again, um. That whole area along Boyer, um, we're gonna have some trees in some areas, but, um. You know, that big six-foot long fence and the multimodal path, I don't think that we did a great job with. Enhancing the human scale along those cor, that particular corridor there, so, um, I'm glad that's in there. Um. Page seventy. Okay, and this was something I heard from a resident who's pretty involved in. Understanding roads and transportation and everything else. Understanding roads and transportation and everything else, and um some of his questions and input were um. Something that we don't do at the state level. Um, you know, we have the Idaho Transportation Department. But they don't actually provide community funds or support um. People getting from place to place other than building them roads and we're unlike other states, which as a part of their transportation departments, they also. Support public transportation in that. So um. This individual asked if we might go further to a state level and look into that. So he brought that up as. In reference to some of these transit goals and and how spot buses incorporated into that, and maybe we need to um. Lobby our state a little bit more to get them to start taking care of our public that don't have other means to get places. But it was great. Page seventy three. Oh, this is a big one for me. Parks, Recreation and Trails. Shouldn't that say parks, open space? Recreation and trails. Okay. Okay. Okay, um, then page seventy four. Same thing. Let's see, where is it? It says City Parks Recreation Open Space Division is responsible. Oh, wait, maybe it's on the other side of the page.
Remind me later, Devin. I'll show you how to highlight PDFs. Probably save us an hour tonight.
Thank you. How old are you again, Jason? Remember, I'm a PT when you're broken. I can fix you. Um, okay, so I think it's, well, that's bizarre. I think it's in there. Somebody must have made that comment and changed it. I don't know. Okay, um. Oh, no. So we say um ten facilities, we say how many thousands of acres and we say access to Schweitzer and we mentioned ten miles of shared paths. But we don't really mention any mileage of our trails in the watershed. So I was wondering if Jason wanted that in there. Let's see. Moving on to page seventy eight clerical on this one. That tab is offset. Should it shouldn't it line up with the other ones? Okay. Yeah, and you too, if you become a councilperson can do this. Um, let's see seventy eight. Um, page eighty seven. The comment is um. Is that accurate when we mention the relationship with police and the school system still after we changed that recently? Or is that not totally accurate? Because I couldn't remember all the details in my head. And that's on page um.
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven, and I don't know what paragraph because I don't know how to highlight Jake like Jason does.
But I think that still currently is accurate. We do have one school resource.
Okay, and that's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to ask ask that question really quick. And then on page eighty eight, it references, and maybe I'm just ignorant to this because my children are beyond middle school. But it talks about an additional middle school as opposed to a new middle school because those are two different things to me.
Additional doesn't mean new?
Well, additional to me would mean you'd end up with two middle schools. And enough kids to fill both of them. A new middle school to replace the old one is a new middle school.
Isn't that a little bit beyond our scope?
It is, but if it's incorrect in here, that's saying we're we need.
Doesn't mean the school district can't build a new middle school if we say additional.
No, it can't, but you know, dude, sorry. Um. Page eighty eight, the library is generally viewed as a valued community resource. I don't even know why the generally the word is in there. The library is viewed as a as a valued community resource. Let's see. Okay, then page ninety two is just um giving a thumbs up to, you know, um. Getting more community members involved and making sure we hear the public. So that's just a um. I'm glad it's in there and we can always get better. It's a journey. Then um hundred and two. Particular attention will have to be given to building heights and scale. I wrote a comment about that, and I guess um I'm just hoping that that all gets then related back into code changes like we were talking about downtown revitalization. So. And then page one oh four. Let's see, where was that? That was impacts. Oh, my eyes are failing. There's a typo in there. I'll bring it up. I'll bring it to you later, Amy. Page one twelve has a spacing between a T and an O that needs to go away. So check out page one twelve for another typo. And then what is that? Okay, one nineteen. There was. The air quality. I don't know. Sometimes their air quality gets pretty bad. I don't know if that needs to be in the comp plan, but I thought that was not as accurate as it could have been. And then um on one nineteen also. It discusses. Well, why is that? I think I have the wrong page number. Sorry about that. Oh, here it is. Um. Further planning efforts. So it's that second paragraph um says. Create city-owned waterfront properties in addition to potential code changes. No, that actually isn't. Anyway, there's somewhere in that zone with the waterfront stuff that references that most of South Sandpoint is private access. But what some people don't know is that some of our streets actually are public all the way into the water, but it's not publicized. So there was something in there in between. I think it got late and I got the page number wrong. Page one twenty six references preserve and create natural parion um. And. Take care of the veg- that natural vegetation along the shoreline. Um, I'm glad that's in there as a goal. I think it was in there as a goal before. And I'm hoping that that starts to happen with more code changes, especially along the boardwalk. And then as the sewer treatment plant is updated, hopefully behind the sewer treatment plat because there's a lot of invasive stuff going on back there. So hopefully I can look forward to code changes. Uh, question for Jennifer, page one twenty six, promote incentives for water conservation. And I know we did an entire study on altering fee structures, and this was a question from the public. Relative to changing how we bill all that stuff, and I don't remember where we landed on incentivizing. So if you recall any of that, Jennifer. If that member of the public's listening, um, or is that a question you could answer later and I can get that information out there?
I don't know the answer, counselor, off the top of my head, but I know we have some of that built in. We don't have as many tiers as what we previously had.
And that was the question, and I my thought was to try to explain that really everybody was buying a gallon of milk. But we were trying to get people to buy the half gallon, but it didn't really exist. So there wasn't a reason to incentivize that. I mean, that's a really stupid analogy, but it works for me and it worked for the person. So um. I think so. And if you could get me some details, just email to him. That would be great. Um. One twenty seven review enforce code. I see that um. We're having the same goal of enforcing codes for dark sky lighting compliance. Please, please, please. I know that was in there last time, and I know that's staff. Related kind of issue, but if there's any way we can manage to maybe. Start doing a better job of educating the public on that one, possibly in utility bills, blah, blah, blah. But I love that it's in there. I just think that. We could do a better job. Um. And then I get into appendix A, chapter six. And there's some reference that just um. And I don't have that pulled up, but basically it's the one that just says um it's relative to the multimodal plan and that we're totally going to implement that. And I think we've heard from the public that um that they want some changes to occur in in some areas that multimodal plan. And so um I know that the comp plan is sort of a fluid document and we can come back and make changes to it. So I guess my point is that before we start implementing all the pieces of the multimodal plan and funding it. That we need to make sure that those pieces are all things that the public wants. And um, chapter eight, relative to the sewage treatment plant. My thought process was, isn't it a short-term timeline now? Haven't we pushed up more towards that as opposed to a medium-range timeline?
The medium would be six to ten. So we have that constructing the wastewater treatment plant in the medium term. We can put it short-term if.
Well, that would be more of a question for Jennifer, but I thought we have been through many, many of the steps, and that's maybe a much broader and bigger question, but if we can. Just make a note of that. That's great. Um.
I think I think we have four point six million dollars budgeted for next year for the water treatment plant. So that is not medium term. It's, I mean, we are beginning these updates next year.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. So to me, I thought we were kind of in the short-term span of we need to get this thing built. It's not a six-to-ten-year thing. Four years ago, it was a six-to-ten-year thing. So that was just, it seemed, and that's a tiny detail that's easy to dismiss. And then chapter eight, again, with the stormwater treatment, um. My concern would be, and this was another question from a resident along the Washington area where we redid those streets and we built all the swales. And there was concern about um uh. What the code was and correcting the code if it needs to be corrected as far as is that still public right-of-way but landowner responsibility to care for? Or now that it's become infrastructure to treat stormwater, is it the um? Streets people, you know, do the streets need to be taking care of that and making sure that the areas where the water supply flow in are clear, etc. So. I know that that can be a little bit confusing for the public. So as we update that, I guess, just make sure our code's accurate accurate for those. And I guess Sixth Street is like that, too. And then um. The final comment, woo-hoo, um, would for the appendix part would be. Maybe to attach the year range for the continuity between councils, employees, etc., instead of just saying short, medium, or long. I know that's defined, but when you're going through these documents and reading hundreds of pages or going through. That and if I have to go back and reference what timeline we should be on, it. It would be useful to have, okay, that's short-term. Well, if we're accepting the document now, that means. This year through this year and this year through this year. And I guess there could be a piece that says, you know, it's not an absolute, but. Yeah.
Well, I I think what Miriam had indicated is this is very much the working document. So. As this is revisited every year and we're we're stating what the status is, that could be updating what the timing is as well. So that'll be a part of reviewing this appendix as we're going through implementation.
But I guess as a working member of the council, if I need to look at the comp plan to see if we're staying on track because the public's asking me. If there are dates in there, then I can go, ooh, that doesn't look quite right, and I can come to staff and get it clarified where we're at, or maybe why we're ahead, or maybe why we fell behind. As anybody who's built a house knows, sometimes you fall behind. Um. So I don't know if that's reasonable for planning document or not. It was just a thought. Um, counselor.
Yeah. I I think where we have dates set to things is in our strategic plan.
Okay.
And so your comp plan's referencing back to your strategic plan, and we're putting timelines on things in the strategic plan.
Okay.
So I think what you could expect to see, um, even as we go into next year and revisiting where we are in the strategic plan, what we've what we've accomplished. Where now we are with comp plan, excuse me, and short-term goals that we might need to pull into the strategic plan.
And then the absolute last comment I have is that future land use map. I don't remember which page it's on. But it seems to neglect that um we have a watershed. And I feel like it needs to be included on that map, and it needs to be put all green either under the parks. So that we know visually that that I know that's a gray area because it's also the utility, but. If we don't want development on it, is it, does it get the quasi-designation? But I don't see it anywhere on a map. Is it a totally separate map? Is it in the the future land use map? It doesn't often come up and and. I think because this is the comp plan, it it still needs to be included in that way, even though I'm making an assumption by saying I think the public wants it to stay the way it is. But I think that's how it needs to appear then.
Well, and the future line use map is really within the city corporate limits, and because that land is actually in our ACI. Maybe that's where we're showing it is is when we identify the ACI that that at this point is staying as open space.
Okay, so as far as the comp plan goes, it's just within city limits, but we have ownership of land outside of city limits. So that's why it doesn't visually come into the complaint. That totally makes sense to me now that you've clarified that.
Land use map is just within the city limits and the ACI.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we protect that watershed. Thank you, and thank you, council members. It was tedious. I know, sorry.
This is what the details. This is this is what we do. Good job. Jason.
Amy, do you mind addressing Mr. Schreiber, Mr. Grimm's comments about the uh. Removal of. C two policy E from the two thousand nine plan about denying extension of services into our ACI. Was that an intentional deletion in this version of the comp plan?
I don't know that it was an intentional deletion, but I think we have it covered in other goals and objectives. Uh, we talk. Let's see, let me find. So in our future land use. And and I do just want to clarify a little bit because there has been a lot of discussion of that objective related to. The Providence subdivision and clearly the. Statement is that we restrict extending services to. Statement is that we restrict extending services to urban development in our ACI. But we do also have a water utility that already serves in the Kootenay ACI. We don't have control over land use in other communities ACIs. So that is why. Using that part of the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan. And saying it goes against what the water utility is doing is not a true. Statement.
I understand that, but I think the community's perspective is that the spirit of the language in our current comp plan. Is to prevent urban sprawl beyond our city limits by not serving utilities beyond our city limits into our ACI. Um, perhaps it was when Mr. Grimm drafted the comp plan thirteen, fifteen years ago. Perhaps he intended to include other cities ACI. So I'm just, you know, we always talk about the spirit of the, the comp plan. Versus the, the exact language. And I don't know if this is something the planning zoning commission discussed. I know it's discussions that we had almost a year and a half, two ago, when we were discussing water rates. And you know, what kind of incentive structure we want to set up as far as serving utilities beyond our city limits. And I, I don't know if that's something we want to discuss tonight, or if this is something we need to reopen and, and discuss whether this is a. Something that needs to be explicitly said, you know, I, I think there are many in the community, especially in regards to the Providence subdivision. That would like us to not just keep that language in this version of the comp plan, but also say, you know, deny extension of services into our ACI or any other ACI. That's just a conversation I think the community wants us to have before we adopt this and, and get rid of explicit language. That people are currently pointing to, to say that we should not have extended services into the Kootenays ACI. Now, personally, I have my own opinions on this matter that may upset people in the community. But I, I know that this is a conversation that's going on in our community. It's, it's something that was brought up by two people tonight. I think it needs to be addressed and discussed at the P and Z level, maybe in another workshop. This specifically and many other items that I think have been brought up tonight as well. So I don't know if you want to respond to that.
Because this issue did come up at the public hearing and planning and zoning commission. We did add the implementation item.
Okay.
About entering into formal inner jurisdictional service agreements, which clarify the terms under which utilities will be provided. So that, that is a new action. And we do, the reality is that. We haven't gotten in this comprehensive plan. We haven't gotten into the ACI discussions and negotiations. So that's an implementation step for this plan. And in that is what are we negotiating with the county in terms of. Our service areas and is the county going to be working with other communities as well to. Limit what happens at their ACI. So. Completely understand the concern. I think it's just we aren't there yet. Because we, this plan is saying we are going to enter into. ACI negotiations. We haven't yet done so. And I think that's why. That language was not put in at this time because I think it's going to get more detailed once we do that.
Also, I mean, isn't that language also? Not included because with negotiations with county, we're talking about shrinking our ACI. And through that. Implicitly, we are intending to serve areas within our ACI in the future. If development patterns necessitate that type of growth. And in response to, you know, some comments tonight about urban sprawl. You know, serving. Possibly new, uh, I forget the exact language in our future land use map, uh, dispersed rural residential or something. You know, half acre lots, one acre lots within a half mile of city limits is a way to prevent urban sprawl. That is currently happening all over the county where, you know, twenty acre or forty acre, a hundred acre lots are being subdivided into five acre lots. That's urban sprawl in my opinion. I think that's, we've heard from the county, especially, uh, that. There's a desire to limit that kind of subdivision beyond our city limits. So explicitly putting that language that we will not serve within our ACI. I don't think is in the best interest of for our twenty year comp plan. Because the, the intention of shrinking our ACI is to consolidate urban sprawl within a much smaller area than it's currently happening all over the county. So I would caution the community to be overly, you know, aggressive about this, the removal of this language. Because that. It, it might be intentional at our level, and we haven't talked about this as a council. So another, you know, this is a conversation we should have with the community. Cause people have noted, have noticed that we've taken that language out. We want to make sure the community understands that it might be intentional, or maybe it was just, you know, something that didn't, didn't make it over from the previous version. But it's a conversation the committee wants to have, you know, what is our philosophy about serving within our ACI and within other. Neighboring cities ACIs. It, it's been a really hot button issue for the last couple of months around this. Providence subdivision. I view that as being a failure of the city of Kootenay, not the city of Sandpoint personally. But, um, you know, it's something that we should explicitly address in, in a more. You know, workshop type setting, I, I think, because it's a big one. It's a really big one. In the next twenty years is going to be development pressures within our hopefully consolidated ACI. And whether we want to support that or not, is, is a question we should address in this comp plan.
And, and it is a big discussion and that's why we kind of kicked the can of. Let's get our comprehensive plan completed and then go and negotiate with the county. So then we can focus just on that sub area plan.
I, I appreciate the discussion and I, I'm grateful that that comment was brought up by the, the two speakers today. And thank you for bringing it back around, Jason. I, I think what's important at this point is that we are explicit about what our values are in the comp plan. And while we will get to the detail in terms of how, how we negotiate with county with regards to the ACI. And what that, um, you know, what that build out can look like. I think it's important that we are explicit in what our values are and that we're. I, I think we've been consistent throughout my time here at the city. That, uh, we value, uh, efficiency, um, in our, in our services. And, um, and, and I think that, um, you know, that's what we're trying to achieve here. Is that if we are going to annex or grow into our ACI, that we're efficient with our growth and that we're not just. Sprawling, right? We, we, I think we're at a place now where we're, we, we need to look seriously at growth and, and even. Embrace it, uh, but we need to do it in a way that is smart and is efficient with our limited resources. So I think if we are explicit with that in, in this language, I think we are where we need to be. But I, I think we do need to be explicit with our values here.
Just have a question. It might be very simplistic, Fonda. This is for you. If we are the only water provider, the only water provider, do we have the legal right to not serve water? I mean, can the developer sue the city? Because we're the only one. There's no choice.
That's a bigger question than, than you want an answer to tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, because I, yeah.
I would say you don't have an obligation to serve outside of your boundaries.
Okay.
But you do have a precedent, an existing precedent of serving outside your boundaries. And so I know that the recent study that's being completed is going to weigh into this, the conversations with the. Of neighboring towns as well as the county regarding ACI. Um, this is going to be a big part of that conversation. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, but.
Good enough. Thank you.
You don't have an obligation to serve outside your boundaries. I can say that.
Okay.
I have a question for councillor Walker, just for clarification, based on your last comment. Were you looking for more specific or different language? Related to service outside of the boundaries of utilities in the comprehensive plan? You, you, you talked about that and then you mentioned a workshop. Are, or are you talking about, let's get through this process. This language is fine. And then let's make sure we really workshop and hear from the community on the, the more detailed. Code related and negotiation related conversations around the ACI and serving outside your boundaries.
Well, I think there were two comments tonight asking explicitly about the removal of language. That would have prohibited us from serving within our ACI. And in the last couple of months, we've seen that we are willing to serve in other cities ACIs. That's caused a lot of misunderstanding and conflict in our community. So when we remove that language, it's going, it's not going to help. That we haven't explicitly stated our position on serving within our ACI and within other cities ACIs. So if that's, and I totally agree with the mayor, this is a values question. If we have a statement of values as far as where we want to see. Development and growth concentrated within service area boundaries, for example, that, that might be totally adequate. And I, I didn't highlight that passage in my PDF, so I don't know where exactly that value statement is made. Um, I know there's some language about efficiency, but I'm, I'm saying that by removing that statement. We're, we're, we're not doing ourselves any favor when this comes around again. Or when we go to extend services under the railroad tracks into a new subdivision just west or something. Because, you know, it's going to come back to haunt us, I believe, if we don't have this conversation. In, in this process of adopting our complaint.
That was my question. Now you go. I'm, I'm trying to evaluate as each of you provide your comments. Where, what your next step is. So I'm really trying to pin down where you're talking about adjusting proposed language. And where you're talking about future conversations after the adoption.
As far as like the workshop idea, I actually tend to agree with Mr. Grimm that. You know, I'll be totally honest, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, I was involved in all these comp plan workshops. It's why I wanted to get involved in planning and zoning. There was a lot of momentum and COVID put that to a stop. And we have done a good job since restarting this. Amy, you've done a fantastic job. P and Z commission, a fantastic job. I had to actually look at the council agenda a few times. Well, this is the final draft we're at, we're being asked to review right now. And I felt like we've only had four days to, to really dive into it. And I don't think the community's had enough time to completely dive into it as well. So I would be very supportive of tabling a decision tonight and calling for at least one more good public workshop. Where we've got the chapters on boards or something and we can invite the public in. We, we've heard through this. You know, parks planning process that people don't feel like they've had enough chance to provide input on the parks plan, on the traverse plan in particular. I just don't want to see this come back to, to bite us later on when, you know. The, the, the council, you know, made this decision without giving the community the chance to really dive deep into this final draft. So I'm, I'm really thankful and I know it's been four years in the making. Um, I've been involved in the planning zoning in the city council level. But, uh, you know, let's, let's open it up and to the community again, give people the opportunity and really promote it. To, to have a, a good public engagement effort before we adopt this final draft. Cause we like, you know, we, we heard from what, five or six people tonight. I know there's five or six hundred that would love. That's a knocking on wood there, but I'm sure there's more who, who would love a chance to engage with us a little bit more deeply on it. Not just provide three minutes of comment. Though I don't know what other council members think about that.
Yeah, councillor Walker, I would tend to agree with you here, but I guess I'm trying to, um, do we go back and workshop this as a council? Or do we open this back up to the public with where it stands right now and some of the changes that were talked about, discussed? And maybe some of the, uh, grammatical things that were changed, the spacing things that were changed. Do we, how, how do we go back about this? Because we've heard some amazing comment. I, I feel the same way as you do. Uh, I was not expecting to see the public not be able to speak this evening on travers. Maybe that was my fault because I was naive. Uh, I was involved in the original one, uh, the two thousand seven, two thousand and eight. I wasn't as involved in the last one. I think all the councillors, as well as the public tonight has brought up some very amazing points. We do have this one opportunity. I would feel much more comfortable having this dialogue with all of you. And where do we go with the public from here? I guess is my question to staff. If we get more response time, are you looking for more response from the public, uh, after tonight's conversation?
I, I honestly, what I'm envisioning is. What are there? Twelve chapters? So twelve tables around the room. Each one has just the slide from Miriam's presentation tonight printed out in large paper, uh, poster behind. And then on the table are the specific goals written on a smaller table. Each of us is sitting at a table or we float around the room. I mean, I, I think it's really important that we seek and listen to the public on this. So, I mean, this is literally the most important planning document that we are about to adopt for the next twenty years. Everything else falls underneath this and, and this, this, in my opinion, shouldn't be the last chance for public engagement tonight.
From a procedural perspective, that idea is fantastic. You just want to really be able to capture all of your public comment in a recorded fashion. You will not be able to do it in that format. So.
But we've done workshops like that in the past. So how, how do we?
So, so if each of you is intending on floating around the room, you'll really need to be able to capture and synthesize that public comment. To put it into the public record so that everybody knows what everybody else had to say. So the beauty of a public hearing is that everybody does come up and, and what they have to say is captured and everybody else gets to hear it.
So we follow that with another public hearing.
Yes. So my suggestion is I don't have any problem with your town hall style conversation. That's great. And then you guys workshop together what you heard and maybe some of the adjustments you want to make. And then follow that up with another public hearing to really accurately capture your public comment.
You're describing exactly what I think we should do. And I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I'm, I'm fine tabling a decision until we've done that. If other people.
Sounds like you're crafting.
You made a motion.
So are you guys ready? Okay. I'd make a motion to table the decision on the final draft of the comp plan and call for a public town hall style workshop. Inviting the public, doing a lot of outreach. Uh, that's what they want. If everybody says they didn't know we were doing this, so let's let everybody know we're doing this. And, you know, then have a public hearing following that to give people the chance after more people have been exposed to this.
No, town hall.
Town hall.
Then workshop.
Workshop.
Councils, you guys can all share with each other what you heard at town hall.
Got it.
Then public.
That's my motion.
It's been moved in second and this will be a roll call vote.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Groot?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Thank you councillor Welker for bringing that thought all together with the help of Fonda. Yes.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Sprow?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes. And with that, uh, is there anyone left that would like to continue the public hearing, madam clerk?
Mister Mayor, if you're referring to public.
Public forum, I'm sorry.
Uh, there were some additional, uh, sign up sheets we received for folks who did not have an opportunity to comment earlier in the meeting.
Chris Moore?
Oh no, it's that guy again. Good to see you all. Thank you for your service. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. And what I was going to speak about is just that, the public outreach. Um, I cannot tell you how often I hear from people that they just don't know what's going on. And I say to them, well, I know that the city does what they're supposed to. They'll put an ad or something in the paper. Or they'll do some sort of posting where a development is going in and still. People don't know what's going on. So I encourage you to be creative with how you reach out to the public. And get them involved because I know that they really want to be involved. And they just don't know how. And, you know, let's face it, everybody's busy. They're working hard. People are struggling. We all know that and they've got a lot on their mind. So engaging them is your job, unfortunately, even though this is a thankless job that doesn't pay. Right? But that's what we do as representatives. We have to go out and, and seek that consensus and that understanding from the public. So I, I commend you for, for recognizing that tonight and, uh, making the choice that you did. So it was a good one. So good to see all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Moore.
Kyle Schreiber?
Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident, uh, wasn't planning on speaking in the public forum either. But, uh, you know, as most of you, I did not like what I saw at the beginning of this meeting and I don't feel like people are being heard. You know, I'm not going to talk about the thing that you're not supposed to talk about. But, uh, I think it does bring up a bigger question and I want to start by saying that, um. Myself and everyone I've talked to is very grateful to the Russell family and I don't mean to, to, um. Suggest that they have anything but the best intentions in Sandpoint, but I think that there's a danger when we set a precedent. That, uh, someone with a donation can change the course of our. Our, our public parks or our any, anything in our comp plan. What's the point of having a comp plan if somebody can, and can bring some money to the table and change that? I was, I was combing through the two thousand nine comp plan in preparation for this meeting and there was nothing about attendance facility. So, you know, I've talked to people in the skateboard community who felt like they were held, held hostage, that they only got their skateboard expansion. If they supported the thing we're not going to talk about. And same with trees. Yes, I love that we're planting more trees. We should be definitely be planting more trees, not as a condition of a certain project. And so with all of the big projects that we have coming up in the works, we need to make sure. And so with all of the big projects that we have coming up in the works, we need to make sure that we're not um, putting anybody's opinions over anyone else's or anybody else's or anyone's, uh, agenda above anyone else's. When the public shows up in record numbers, we need to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Schreiber.
Maddie Johnson? Christina Orton? Barbara Best? Oliver Pratt? Julia Lacander? And Grace Bauer? Mister Mayor, that is, those are all the signup sheets I have.
Okay, that concludes.
Mister Mayor, one moment. Rebecca Holland?
This has happened before. So these are all the petitions. I've got over three hundred signatures from people, one at a time at the playground for the most part, that only wanted to come to the table. We've started an online petition. There's over a.
We've been through this.
Fifteen hundred. I'm gonna have my piece. If we're gonna keep this going.
I can't give you time when I, when I didn't let anyone else.
Okay, well, Justin, um, I'll, I'll switch to a different, I've got two minutes. Don't, uh, Justin, you're not being naive. You know, when we're talking about values, we're talking about values. And it's been talked about before. With, with, with a town hall and a workshop hearing. I'm not gonna talk about the thing we can't talk about. Really? Really Shelby?
Yep, gotta keep it fair Rebecca. I can't, I can't let you talk when everyone else was given the directive to not speak on the item that's already been decided. It's part of the rules that were discussed at the beginning of the meeting. Same rules we have every night. You've already addressed this issue before us many times before.
Do you wanna, you will respect her service for all these years?
We'll have you, have you go outside.
Oh boy.
That's your choice.
Okay. This is really shameful, every one of you. This is really shameful.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone who's signed up to speak?
Let me check on Zoom, Mister Mayor. We do have a hand raised, Mister Mayor. Zach Hagadon?
Yeah, hi, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good evening. Uh, I know I'm not really supposed to ask a question, but I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on uh, when we might expect to see the public town hall, the councillor Welker suggested and that the council voted in favor of it. Is that to be announced, to be determined?
Yeah, Jennifer, I don't know if you can speak to that now. She's, she's, uh, in control of the calendar. She would be the best to address that. Um, but I think we're probably gonna have to uh, noodle it a little bit. Uh, Jennifer, do you, can you respond to that?
Uh, Mister Mayor, I don't know that I can respond with a date on that tonight, given that the council's asking for a town hall workshop format. That wouldn't be a regular council meeting. We'd be scheduling a special meeting, so we'll need to reach out and um, determine availability and schedule that.
Okay, so to be determined.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Madam Clerk?
One moment, Mister Mayor. Heather Flint Chato?
Hi there. I, hi there, I, uh, Heather Flint Chato, um, I, I just wanted to follow up on the public engagement conversation that's been happening tonight. Um, I, this is an area of expertise, um, in my professional field as a planner and I just wanted to, one, ask whether, ask a question and then two, make a suggestion. Are the people who have submitted testimony on an issue added to a notice list? Because I, if not, I would strongly encourage that that be an automatic. Because if you've already spoken on an issue, you have an interest in it and you'd like to know how the process is going forward. And that was deeply disturbing for many of us who have been trying diligently to track this. And to have missed the bitten testimony window impacted our ability to actually share the content with you. Um, that was updated language. And so I, our understanding was that we would be noticed. Um, and so I, my, can you let me know if that is standard practice or not? And if it's not, could it be?
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Um, and we can, um, certainly work on that. We don't, we don't have an automated system for noticing like that. But I'm, I, I know what you're saying and I think it's a great suggestion and we can work on that.
Thank you. I, I have another suggestion. Um, uh, about twenty-five years ago, when I was a, a new planner, um, one of my mentors said, you know, sometimes you just have to set up a table with a box of donuts on the corner. And I strongly recommend that kind of go to where the people are kind of approach. Set up a table at the farmer's market. Go where people are naturally going to be. Because people won't come to you unless you put it right in front of them. And so I, I strongly encourage that, you know, if you really wanna get this kind of input and not have people come to you later and say, I didn't know about it, I don't have a voice. Your, your, half your town is showing up at your farmer's market and, you know, it, it just seems like there, there are fun ways to engage with the community members. Um, have handouts that they can stick up on their fridge so they can show up and be heard. And, and then they can't say they didn't know about it. So I strongly encourage those kind of creative solutions, door hangers, you know, things like that. When you have big decisions like this, it's really important. Thank you so much for opening this and I really wanna just value, validate that I appreciate that you decided to open that up for a workshop and then a follow-up meeting. That feels really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate those comments. Um, Madam Clerk?
I believe that is all who have signed up to speak during public forum, Mister Mayor.
Okay, and I believe that, uh, concludes our regular agenda for this evening. So with that, this meeting is adjourned and I hope everyone has a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.